I'd like to call the city council meeting to order this evening. Thank you all for joining us. If you'd all rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, if you would, please take roll call.
Here.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our January 16th meeting. If I have any corrections, if not, a motion to approve?
Make a motion, accept them as emailed.
I'll second that. Motion and a second to approve the minutes from our January 16th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. The first thing I would look for this evening would be a motion to close the city council meeting so that we can open a public hearing.
Suspend, not close.
Suspend, thank you.
So moved.
Second it. I have a motion and a second to suspend the city council meeting so that we can open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. And I would look for a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. A second.
I have a motion and a second to open a public hearing in reference to the water rates and charges. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. And with us this evening, we have Jennifer, help me.
Jennifer Wilson.
Jennifer Wilson from Crowe Horwath, and Mark Sullivan from Midwestern Engineers. Midwestern Engineers is the engineering firm we've been working with the last three years or so in trying to develop our plan on where, how, and when to do this project. And Crowe Horwath has done all the financial work on our behalf as far as preparing budgetary items, et cetera. So if I'd ask Jennifer and Mark to join us up here at the table and maybe give a brief overview of what your company has done. Also here this evening is Craig Lottz with Crowe Horwath, and Steve Bender. I knew it was Steve. Steve Bender from Midwestern. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll lead off. Again, my name is Mark Sullivan. I'm with Midwestern Engineers. And what I want to do is just give you a brief overview of the two phases of the water project that will subsequently lead to Jennifer's discussion of the rate and the rate ordinance and stuff that's before you later tonight. Phase one of the project, which is slated to begin this year, and it will take place in 2018 and 2019 over a two-year period for phase one. And the primary purpose of phase one is to replace the Monroe Street Water Plant, the existing plant right out here by the river on Monroe Street, and to replace the wellfield that provides the water supply to that Monroe Street plant. The existing wellfield is a little farther on out to the northeast from the plant. The reason we are replacing both is the fact that both facilities are at the end of their useful life. The Monroe Street Plant is physically 65 years old. It's served the city well, but it's old, it's worn out, it's tired. It's using technology that's not efficient for water treatment. It's using softeners to treat for iron, which is not really an acceptable means of doing that. The other driving force is the fact that the existing wellfield or the water supply is at the end of its useful life. The companies that service that, the capacities are starting to fall off. The leases are coming due. It's time for the city to find a more reliable source of water to service that side of town or that facility. Through the study, we looked at several alternatives. We looked at completely abandoning that and bringing all the water from Burne and greatly enlarging the South Water Plant. That option was considerably more expensive. The hope was that we could find a replacement wellfield, which we have on city-owned property, 100 acres out to the east of town, and that we could replace the Monroe Street Plant with a new plant. Not only does that, probably most importantly, it provides redundancy to the existing plant. By having an East Side Plant and the existing South Winchester Street Plant, now each plant can back the other one up during repairs, during an emergency outage. It just provides the city a more redundant source of water. The wells, the test wells have been drilled out east. We have found sufficient water on the existing city property. We are going to have about 1,200 gallons per minute of water supply out there. So phase one, the primary component of phase one construction and design would be to design the new wellfield. The test wells are in, but we still got to do wellhouses and the well pumps and everything. They would pump the water to a new treatment plant that would be located somewhere on that 100-acre site that would provide a new source of water for the city for the next generation. And I mean, that's what we're after, is to replace a worn-out facility with a new facility that's good for the next generation. Also included in phase one are various water main replacements where the city has either had problems with a lot of water leaks, pipe failure, indoor lines that are too small, which would reduce pressure to the customers. We're looking at Homestead Drive Main Replacement, High Street Main Replacement, County Road 500 North Main Extension. All three of those are in phase one. Also, we were going to make some modifications to the water tanks that better control the levels of water in those, and some various other just general capital improvements. That essentially makes up the bulk of the work that will be included in phase one. Phase two, which will begin in 2020, the year 2020, and will take place over a two-year period, 2020 through 2021, it includes the following components. We will renovate the Winchester Street Plant down on Winchester Street. That plant is 50 years old. So we've joked in several meetings that your new plant, or we call that the new plant, but it's 50 years old. So it's also nearing the end of its useful life without a renovation. Phase one will complete the East Side Plant. It'll be able to operate allowing us to take Winchester Street out of service. And we will come in, we'll replace the iron filters, the softeners, all the major pieces of equipment in there, and completely renovate that plant. Also, as part of phase two, we will rehabilitate the raw water main that pumps the raw water from the Burne Wellfield. Currently, the wells that serve the Winchester Street Plant are located, those wells are cleared out in Burne. They have to pump through a main all the way up here to town. That main is getting old and needs fixed. And we will be able to take that out of service, repair and fix that main and get that back up to snuff. We're also going to do improvements at the Burne Wellfield, improve some pumps, provide standby generators. In addition to those, we are doing a couple of other water main replacements, a Winchester Road Extension, and some just general water main improvements that are part of the project also. So that makes up the phase two project. When you're done with phase one and phase two, you will have a brand-new water plant and a completely renovated water plant on the south side. Again, the goal of everything is to provide water service to the citizens of Decatur for the next generation. And this will set up that next generation with good water service that they can count on for the next 30, 40, 50 years.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Jennifer.
All right. My name's Jennifer Wilson, and we serve as your rate consultant. And we came in and prepared the rate report that we had presented to you at the prior meeting. We, in the revenue requirements, we come in and we look through your operation and maintenance expenses and your taxes, and we made adjustments, and they're all detailed in that report. We also looked at the projects that Mark just discussed on a way, how are we going to finance those? So we proposed doing those in a two-phase series, where there's a 2018 bond that will be approximately $9.5 million, and a 2020 bond, which will be approximately $8.9 million. You'll have that bond ordinance in front of you later on to discuss. Those two, when we add in estimated debt service on the 2018 bond, that debt service is at almost $700,000. You also have currently outstanding some debt, the 2017 refunding bonds that you had savings from earlier this year by refunding. And then you also have some other capital projects that you need to do in addition to the ones that will be bonded for. The total revenue requirement is approximately $2.5 million, including all those items that we discussed. Currently, you're bringing in about $1.8 million. Do you have a $700,000 deficit? That $700,000 will be raised by having a rate increase of 40% for the phase one. In phase two, we estimate the debt service on that will be approximately $680,000. So that deficit of about $650,000 when we apply it to 2020 has a rate increase of 27%. So we're recommending a two-phase rate increase, 40% now, and a second one in 2020 of 27%. What that means to a minimum customer is that the rate is currently $16.24, and that's for usage for 0 to 300 cubic feet. It would go from $16.24 up to $22.73 for a $6.49 increase for our minimum customer. In phase two, it would go up to $28.86, which is another $6.13. We like to look at the average, which is about between 600 and 700 cubic feet. So 600 cubic feet customer would see a $10 increase in phase one and a $9.50 increase in phase two. We also did a rate survey, which we passed out to the council. And in that rate survey, if you actually go to the last phase of the rate survey, you can see where your sewer rates compare to other communities locally situated in either Ohio, DeKalb County, Huntington County, Allen County, et cetera. You can see right now that your Decatur sewers' works rates are slightly just below the middle of the 17 communities that we looked at. If you go to the second to last page, you can see what we compare you to on the water utility side. Currently, the water is during the bottom third, and after the first phase of the increase, you're right at 2/3. And then after the third phase, you are the highest one of the 17 communities. But you can see, we also, other communities have phasing end of the rate, and we only use their current rate. And your rate will be about $3 greater than the next one. So we do anticipate the other ones will increase by the time 2020 comes around for that second phase. If you go to page, one more page closer, we combined both the water and the sewer, and you can see where Decatur is right, hunched up right there in the middle. Where combined rate right now is $79. After phase one, it would be approximately $91. And then after phase two, it'd be $101. And you are not at the highest, Defiance Ohio is higher than you. Garrett, Huntington, Butler, and Hunter Town are all higher than you, and a few of those are actually having rate increases implemented right now or phasing implemented. So that's a, just a quick summary of the rate survey that we discussed. We'd be happy to entertain your comments.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Before we go to the public, are there any comments from council? If not, I would entertain comments from the public. I would only ask that if you want to speak, that you would state your name for the record, since this is a public meeting, and that you would limit your comments to no more than a couple of minutes. And then if, after that person makes a comment, if somebody else wants to make a comment, that's fine, but we don't need to have the same comment made by more than one person. So with that, if the general public would like to make any comments, floor is open.
Darrell Massman?
Darrell Massman, thank you.
What made us go with just a bond, a two-bond versus a bond every year, since this is a four-year incremental?
Right, I can think of that one. It's because you're supposed to spend your proceeds down in a two-year time period, and these projects are supposed to go over a four-year time period. So it exceeded, that's why we're doing two-bond issues, is that it puts up the two-year period.
So from a cost standpoint, is this a much better way of doing it?
Well, I mean, the project, we'll list it out over a four-year period, and that's how it are designed to be.
Darrell, was your question why we didn't do four, four bonds rather than two? Yeah, more cost.
It actually costs more.
It would cost more.
It's funny how that would impact the rate for the community as well.
If you did four bonds, right now, rates are still historically low in comparison, so that, we do want to try to issue bonds as quickly as we can right now. You wouldn't necessarily want to divide that up and not knowing what the rates might be a year from now. We do need to check out what they might be in two years for that second bond issue. But that's why we did two instead of four bond issues, that you can put both of those projects, like two years for these projects together.
Jennifer, am I right that if we could have bonded all of this in one bond, we'd do it now because the interest rates are low?
Correct.
But we can't.
Projects in a tiny.
Yeah, the bond can, has to be completed within, or the-
Project construction has to be completed within two years, so that's why we have to go to two bonds.
That's right.
And the other aspect of that is what Mark alluded to earlier, is that in order to do all of the projects, we have to have the new plant up and running before we can shut down the other plant in order to retrofit that plant and improve the transmission line. So it's just the nature of the projects that we have to fund that make it more feasible to do it, and because of the timeframe in which these construction projects will take to be done, especially on the construction of a new plant, that's probably a 15- or 16-month project. So it fits in a two-year window, so that's why that's being targeted in the first phase.
Other questions? Come ahead.
40% seems rather high, uncommonly high, I think. Have we been, I'm asking the city council this question, have we, we've known this was going to happen for years? Have we been putting money back for this project?
I'll take that, Darrell. That's one thing that, when I wear a business hat versus a government hat, you would think, when I first came on council, we built a new water tower. And I would, and my first comment was, well, why didn't we save for a new water tower? You're not allowed to. We can only save so much money per year for anticipated projects, the way, not just our municipality, but all government, I should say municipality government, does projects through bonding. That's the common, it's the norm. It seems backwards to me, too.
The other question, are we not writing up more than we should?
Well, I think we're behind.
Yeah. Well, Jeremy might be able to speak to the repairs on this, if he's a factor. I can't see him, but there he is. I live on the west side of town, so I drive down Washington Street. Recently, there were some major improvements there, and eventually, next spring, that's going to get paid. But before that was all done, and they replaced the line, I could count the number of places in the street that there had been repairs. And from 27 to the railroad tracks, over 12 repairs that I could count. And from what Jeremy's told me, as repaving was done on that street, it paved over other repairs. So when we have a blowout, we lose money, first of all. Secondly, it costs anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000 every time we go out to repair a main break. So we have mains in the city that were installed in the 1890s. We have mains where, and Washington Street's a good example, where we had repairs right next to repairs. We have that in a number of locations. Homestead and High Street were two that are targeted. Those are in desperate need of repair. And so that's why those are being included in the bonding, because we can get to those and do them quicker and not incur this continued cost of repairs.
Yeah, Tim's 100% right. Well, I said you can blow that map up just a little bit. Kind of thinking back on what Tim just brought up, you know, we have water mains that are 1890, 1895 that still exist today. We have a lot of very old infrastructure within the city. Our well, our current wellfield behind the outpost site is, and it's, we've run a lot of tests, we've done a lot of future planning, a lot of calculations over the last four or five years, as they don't think you really do. You know, so we are in that area, just that you guys, the city guys know, it's a dense area right in here. This wellfield, which we correct about 30% of our water from, is what, apple wells are all, and those five are only producing, they vary significantly, 20%, 30% of what they are producing. You know, so that's the biggest issue. Ever one of these dots that you see, you're in a one-year, a 12-month cycle. That's where we've been on water main rates.
That's the last 12 months, you say?
Yeah. That's, that's an 12-month period. So you can see, it's not just little areas, it's everywhere throughout the city. A normal city our size, you would see anywhere from 30, maybe 35 leaks total, or averaging 16 to 17 leaks a year. Some of these are recurrent. You know, yeah, we are behind, and everyone understands we're behind. We, we've been working as hard as we can work in as great a way as we've worked the last five years, six years to correct some of these problems. It all takes time, and it takes a, it takes a lot of work. Couple of projects that have been discussed, Marston Extension, 500 North Extension. How many of you guys remember three or four years ago when we had a real deep freeze and we lost all the water in the city? A couple of these connections that we're proposing will not 100% eliminate that problem, but it will give us access to pump water the other direction. You know, kind of pump back around, shut some valves, so we can continue pumping. So if we do still continually have problems with some of these lines while we are replacing or recapping that, we're not running the hard rest or running the city out water again. There are some other areas, the High Street, up at Hospital, that's been a problem for many, many years. Every time we walk, work online, the hospital has issues. You know, that's one of the areas that we know that, you know, we need upsides. That is also included in this project. The Homestead, Homestead's been pretty quiet the last, the last year or so. This used to be a big hell of a area out here. We just have dots everywhere. You know, that is one of the original areas, probably one of the older areas within the city that have to see a lot of their main that is probably not quite undersized, but it's in very poor condition. High Street's the same way, you know. You guys drive down High Street all the time, every year. You know, there's, there's times we're out there every day for a couple of weeks. I mean, nobody likes increases, rate increases. I don't, I don't think anybody's.
Listen, you scroll that up some.
We're at a point that we're getting so far behind that, that we have to do something with the wells, with the plants, with the other infrastructures that we have in the city.
There's Homestead.
Did you switch the?
She put, Homestead wasn't on there. I wanted to see Homestead.
Can I connect them?
Yeah, we switched to Homestead, so it's, you're on the other map at this point. You know, every leak that we have is anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000 every time we go out. You know, so you take 60, 50, 50 leaks a year, a year's time, all applied, say by 10, you know, it's hard for us to keep going down the same road that we're going down and still be able to get a lot of these. I'm not a financial person. You have any questions on leaks, areas, so long as I'm filling my head back there. But Mark is our engineer on this project, obviously we have financial here.
Jeremy, what's this particular map illustrate?
Yeah, that's actually supposed to be the hotter spots of the, of the city. The darker red, the lighter and it's, so you can kind of see where some of it's concentrated. We've been doing a white event in house at some of the smaller areas to reduce the cost, you know, so we had time with our own workforce. And you're going to see a lot more of that going forward. We're not just going to go out and contract every little thing that we can do. You know, we're, we're working with the guys as rate bearers as much as we can to try to keep rates down, still accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Yes. Is that your name?
Nicole Patrick. Okay, so everything's like this, and you guys are kind of sugarcoating it, saying the minimum users' bill will increase approximately $7. What I heard was 67% over the next two years. So the first rate would be 40%, and my bill's $100, so my bill's going to go up $40.
Is your whole bill $100?
My water bill's $100.
The water, what is your whole utility bill?
$100.
Okay, there's five things on your utility bill.
No trash, we don't have trash bills, we don't pay anything.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer? Okay. How much is water?
The water is probably $35.
So Nikki, I think what they're saying is you're-
Wait, excuse me.
Yeah, read just the water portion. There's a water and a sewer portion.
27.32.
How much is the total? Total bill?
94.12. So is our sewage going up any?
No, just the water.
Just the water.
So that, take that 27 times 40%.
That 27 would be right there at, between the 600 and 700 cubic feet I was talking about, so that's a $10 increase for phase one and $9.50 for phase two. Okay.
That's a little better, isn't it? When you look at it that way.
Yeah, it was nine, I was cleaning my nose, and I went, that's way much lower. But I'm actually more concerned about people that are big income.
Sure.
Because how are they going to be able to afford that kind of an increase?
And Nikki, what, Nikki?
That's where the confusion comes from, because everyone looks at it as a water bill. And if you live within a city, goodness, there's five services also on that bill. The trash, the sewage, the sewage, so on and so forth. So, you know, you're, just because you call it a water bill is not just a water bill. And that's where a lot of confusion comes from.
You made the comment about sugarcoating, you know, we're not trying to sugarcoat anything, and we don't want to do this, it's, we have to do this.
Right, and I guess that it needs to be done, and that's fine. Another one of my questions that I had was, is this the only company that you've looked into doing it? Have you looked around for somebody cheaper or whatever? Because, I don't know.
We've been, we have been talking-
Yeah, when we first started this project, Mark, or Mark discussed it about five, three, four years ago. It's probably about three years ago. I went through an interview process where I competed against other engineers through that initial selection.
Basically like a contractor and a proposal?
It's called a request for proposals.
They kind of review based on your qualifications. I mean, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It's not solely based on level of speed, it's based on, have you done this before? What do your references say? Are you qualified to do that type of work? And I'm sure they consider it also, I'm sure when they check their references, how these guys compare price-wise to others. So it's a pretty comprehensive review that they go through, and we have to compete to ultimately get that done.
That's a very good question, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell?
I have one more question. The way you just explained a lot of these, I, I am- The way you just explained a lot of these, and I, I understand the importance of maintaining the water and the sewage system. It looks like a lot of these, if not all of these, betterments are due to old infrastructure being worn out. I live out in the rural subdivision, as the fair amount of us do here. And I'm struggling to why we're paying a higher increase for this, for this betterment than people in town itself.
You would take that one?
Okay.
And I, and I do understand that as you go out, you know, it has to transport, and I get all that. But this, what I'm looking at, is a betterment for what was already there for, for the town.
Okay, so I, I want to make sure I understand. Are you...
They're affiliates.
Okay, so you, you are a rate payer, but you live outside the city. Okay, yeah.
Of what would already be a hundred.
Yeah, that's very typical, that, that's a typical charge for providing city services to non-city residents, so...
I understand that. But what I'm asking is, is that appropriate in this situation? Because what we're bettering is what is already there, and the infrastructure is made much cheaper for hotspots in town.
So should only those people living in the hotspots pay for this? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no, you didn't have to do that. Now, think about this. What I'm asking is, Tim, is this is a betterment for the town and for the community. So, why would someone who's living outside the community, how much of this is hitting your rural communities right now?
Well, back to you, Mike, because you're supplying from that.
I, I, what I'm saying is, but, but I'm looking at infrastructure upgrades because of the curation.
No, but if, if you pulled that first map back up, you'll see that lake shores, um, the golf course area, they have breakdowns also. It's on new infrastructure as well as old one.
Right, are they in town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but we are not. And so that's why I'm asking the question. The thirty, an extra in this situation, I don't think it's just...
I guess one of my...
And I know, and I understand, well, typically we always charge hundreds of that. But you haven't always had an eighteen point some million dollar bond, you had upper equipment.
Jennifer?
There's a way that, that utilities rate, that you could do it across the board, which is what we're proposing right now. So we're not changing any of the rate structures that are involved, so we're not changing the thirty percent charge for outside city users. We're saying all rates will increase by forty percent in phase one and twenty-seven percent phase two. In order to do what you are suggesting is possibly changing the rate structure, we would need to do a much more involved study, a cost reserve study, which then would reallocate all the rates of the utility. So it's not as easy as just looking at this entire, this one project and reallocating the rates just for this project. You'd have to look at the entire system, and that's not the study, the study at this point. There's the term that we're calling rate rate across the board.
So I'm, am I correct that we supply water to, like, that neighborhood? Well, I would, Darrell, come back with, yours isn't old yet. It will be, and there will be more problems in that portion of town, too.
I understand. I understand, but we're paying, we're paying a hundred and thirty percent right here. Which, and we don't get...
Your area, there's other areas, too.
And that is only for water and sewer.
Right.
Not the five options. Okay, you're out of the four groups.
Yost Woods or Oakwood, just south of town, is very similar structure to what you guys live in. They get city water. No, there's city sewer. There's sewer, okay.
And that's kind of what surprised when they had cities, when they had water issues, is why the city didn't step in and help them out. But I don't know all that.
Their association years ago requested assistance on the sewer side and not water, so.
Okay.
Be up to them.
But anyway, I, I, I don't know, I still look at the problems in the infrastructure in the town. And it just seems like if you're living in a rural, rural subdivision or a rural community, in this situation, you're paying for more than your parents are paying for.
But the vast majority of this project is not line issues, but treatment plant upgrades.
The major, major project here are the treatment plants.
And the well fields.
Which everybody benefits. Where we get the water, that's the major...
Why do we look at, at this?
That's, that's, that's part of the, part of the total cost is covering those projects, okay? But that's not the major portion of either one of the phases. If you, if you look at, at the breakdown of the cost, it's the new well field and new plant, and then it's the renovation of the old plant, or the second plant, and the renovation of the transmission line from the well fields to, from Burn.
Can you put that up on the board? One thing, if I, if I may, real quick, and I understand what you're saying, and I don't know where you're at in relationship to the, the city, I mean, your location. But the water distribution system, you have to look at it in its entirety. You may have new lines, but that water's passing through the distribution system to get out to you. If that failed up here, you lose your water. If we have a water main break where we lose pressure that would result in a boil order, you're boiling your water. You are part of...
I, I understand.
And the point I'm making, and the point I'm making is...
I, I'm sure you're motioning out, um, the increase in, in, and how it does affect...
But what I was trying to point out is the improvements that are being made, even though you may be on a lot, a lot newer water main, your water mains are dependent upon the old system's function.
And I'm not, I don't have any problems with it paying equal amounts.
So like seven, eight dollars?
Because I, I agree with you on the fact that we are looking to pay for improvement. I just don't agree with the increase in the thirty percent above and beyond. That's, that's the heart of that.
Do you mind sharing what your rate would go up? You know that, Anthony?
About a ten dollars, fifteen dollars.
That'd be what?
Fifteen dollars?
About a hundred bucks.
To be similar. I just wondered, because my bill's only go about nine dollars, too. I was trying to see the difference. And I live in the city, that's why I was trying to gauge your concern about your cost compared to my cost.
Right, but there's other standards, yeah.
All right, it's the difference between where you live, too. But again, the major part of this project and the money is going to the actual water treatment plants. Uh, the east side well field treatment plant, that's six million, two hundred and sixty-one. And then when the, uh, the rehabilitation of the Burn transmission main, that's two million, seven hundred and sixteen.
Jennifer, can you kind of touch on as far as the actual lines themselves? How much of the project that's made up of? It's a very small amount. Like, the, the point of this whole thing is, and I think we need to move on, is that it's not about the water lines near as much as it is about the treatment plant and the line that's providing the water to our old plant, or to our new plant that needs, uh, modified. It's, so, I mean, we're all in this together. Unfortunately, out-of-town residents have to pay a higher rate, and it's, that's not unique to Decatur.
That's pretty much statewide.
Yeah.
Those three major projects, right, directly come along about fifteen, sixteen million dollars. Those, that will help everybody.
Out of the eighteen million, fifteen to sixteen million helps everyone, so.
I got a question. How many, how many milli- was the two plants, the total, you had a new plant and a refurbished?
Well, the plants, or the plants plus the water line...
Not, not the water line, just...
Just the plants.
Maybe a new plant and then refurbishing the old plant out by...
Okay, so the east side well field and treatment plant is about seven point three million dollars of the, of the total project? And Winchester plant is about five point three million? And then regather the Burn transmission main is two point seven million?
The question I got, I know Decatur's always had two water treatment plants, and I see the advantages of having two. But for the sake of reducing costs, can you get by with one state-of-the-art plant out by the Fleetwood for four or five million left? And still get the water from Burn, but find two well fields, new well fields out in that area? But I'll just separate the circuits, maybe I'll create about one water main.
One of the options that we, that we discussed. I don't know if Mark touched on that enough, but I believe that was, well, probably not more.
Now, you wouldn't need a new line going to Burn. The plan B they talked about a year ago, if I remember right, was you would refurbish, though, the one out by Fleetwood, but you'd have to, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd have to add a new line coming from Burn. You'd have two lines from Burn?
You'd have to, you'd have to establish a second line from Burn. The refurbishment in the second line was what Kevin was referring to. That cost estimate was approaching twenty million for the one plant and the supply, because you'd have to increase that supply from Burn versus the option that's being pursued now, which is roughly fifteen to sixty million. So it's about four to five million cheaper doing what's being done.
Well, I just kind of pointed out, can you get by with one plant? Some cities only have one that could reduce possibly the cost of the project. It sounds like the, the one downtown today that's going to go out on six hundred north, is only using maybe twenty-five or thirty percent of the total water coming into town. Can you find that twenty-five or thirty percent out in that area of town and add it to the Burn? You just have one plant pumping water into the city versus two. And you only have one?
You'd have to run twelve hundred mains from property on six hundred to the Winchester.
If you don't need as well as six hundred, it's, it's a lot of what you find in that area.
Well, the study, the study that was done two or three years ago, that's exactly what that study was attempting to do. We went into it trying to search for the best alternative to keep the cost down. Obviously, that's a huge priority. Uh, the selected option was, it was the cheapest option by roughly five million dollars. And we were doing exactly what you were suggesting, because we find the adequate water to be able to power just one plant and not even have two plants. But to do that option, the only way that you're going to find that amount of water that needed to be done was to bring it up from Burn to, to get that, that water supply we needed. So we actually did a study to sort out the best option before we even pursued the option that's being done. It was the selected option, and it was always contingent upon the ability to find water up here and be able to run that east side plant.
What is the gallons per minute we're getting from Burn? Is that two, what, what was that?
Well, seventeen fifty. Yeah, we're about, we're about seventeen fifty from Burn, and we're going to be about twelve hundred out of the new plant.
So that's the question I got, can you find twelve hundred in a new well out on that side of town?
I think we've already answered that, we just answered that.
We have test wells out there.
No, they don't need...
Yeah, but it's going to cost us five, five million dollars more to put, to go find that water. Say we find it on that side of town, we're going to pay an additional five million dollars. But they only paid sixty thousand to test release like that? I know, but say we test you, we pay the sixty thousand, we, we find the water, okay, it's there. But now on the total project, it's going to cost us another five million dollars to incorporate that all into one plant. Is, is what they've done their study on before. I'm not seeing it somewhere. I thought, two plants combined was thirteen or fourteen million dollars, but one plant could be seven or eight million. But the one plant, no, not going to be seven or eight million if you're pumping all the water, it's going to... You got to double the size. Double the size of the plant.
The other part, too, is, he had mentioned earlier, was the redundancy in the system. So, we've done our homework on this situation. The water, the water wells that we have out here on the north side of town are cascading, which means oxygen's getting into the water as it goes down through the rock to get to the bottom of the pump, which causes rust. We have no rust filtration out here, and this plant was built in a floodplain seventy years ago. So we got to go away from that. That property is, the lease is running out on the property of the Buchanan Farm that's going to run out here. We've got a hundred acres over here that we've been planning and going through and do this process with, and have found water supply out here to create redundancy for five million dollars cheaper to where if we're going to push water, we can do it from this direction and we can do it from this direction. You know, there is a cost for that water that comes from Burn. It's not free, that, there's a, there's a cost that comes from the water that we pump for Burn also. That comes from the Taz River, underground river, largest one in, you know, the United States. We found good, clean water out here on a hundred acre property that we already own. So, I mean, I, I, I trust and believe and have listened to a lot of this stuff, and I, the economic portion of it is there, the water supply is there, and the redundancy there. So I really don't understand why there'd be any more questions about that.
I just brought up, you know, they're talking about a lot of money here, and the rates are going up. They really looked at that one plant closer. I just looked at a map, and I don't know what map is the latest and greatest map. I got off the state of Indiana website. The DNR shows a possibility the Taze River is underneath the county ground behind the jail. On the latest map coming off the state site. But the reason I bring it out is, if that map is correct, which I don't know if it is, if there are opportunities that somebody could look at that a little closer, there might be fifteen hundred gallons per minute right behind the jail. On the Taze River goes right below the jail. It's right on the Indiana DNR map.
We, we had here, listening at West, which is a big well, German, do a lot of the testing and the fracture trace analysis, and they get looking at that area. That's been a month or four years ago.
Three or four years ago.
Over a four year ago. They did all the fracture trace analysis, and that's how we ended up down to out on six hundred, five fifty, six hundred, because that was our, that was the number that they had. They didn't, they didn't find quality of water on the jail property. And I know Bill Stell went in past the, the water that you see in the fountain around the jail. It looks a little sultry, that changes the quality from there and, and changes your treatment process immensely. And it's still sultry, and we were, that was thirty years ago, we're still, that's why we're still here.
I'm just bringing up that, if it hasn't been looked at really close, it has been.
It's, it's been, what?
Maybe it's been an opportunity for the show around the map and keep it...
You showed, you showed me the map, but, Mark, you guys obviously would have looked at all those possibilities.
And what I was explaining to him, um, we, we brought in hydrogeologists that are experts in the field to do that very thing, to find this water supply and water quality, too, if sufficient. Sometimes you can find the supply, but it's not quality water that's, that's usable. They specifically looked in that area, and it was ruled out, it just wasn't a useable area.
I'm just bringing it up, you know, talking a lot of money, the complete layout of their project. You guys don't have an increase in the rate, and can you sure look at that?
I would hope that all of you trust us, that we've done our research. We're not just throwing this out here tonight willy-nilly to raise your water rates. You know, this is, there's been years of planning in this, and like Craig said, we didn't have to buy or lease ground to drill the wells, we already own the land. It's, it's, we've done everything we can to try to keep this as affordable as possible. So, yes, ma'am?
Leah Springer, um, how many, questions, how many test sites did you drill? It says the three out on six hundred and five fifty. Did you, did you actually physically drill behind the jail, or was it just the...
I think it was.
Geog- geog- or hydrogeologists that came out and wrote it, they, they, I mean, was there, or was it because we owned the property, you chose to drill that?
There was a load site on our property. Yeah, we looked at the fracture, the fracture trace analysis. I don't know if you were there when we, they were starting that. But there were a series of test wells. Was there a Tesla, uh, peerless has drilled out at the jail, hadn't they?
They drilled the Yost Woods back in like sixty, seventy pounds of more quality water. That's why we went for it.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the time of the plane, or it's 50 years ago.
I'm not doubting what you guys have done all the research, it's difficult, but it's like they could be, I would be there maybe to talk to them, I probably help a few, if you have someone else to look at, maybe there's, maybe you could say you probably-
See, that's, that's the point I think you're missing, even if we find water, that doesn't cut your price in half. That means you double the capacity of a Winchester Street plant. Your, your overall project cost would be, even if you had the water here in town and were increasing the size of that plant, you're making the assumption that if you could just feed it all to one plant, that nothing changes with that plant, it's a, it's half your cost goes away. That doesn't happen. Even if you were doing it with one plant, that plant would be twice the size, probably don't have enough land to even put a large, that size capacity plant on, but that number, that number greatly increases. But through the studies, through the hydrogeologists and the well drillers, that was a key component deciding whether we went with, with the A phase that you recommended or that you referenced over the B phase. If we could have found enough water, which is what we did, that triggered the A phase, which was $5 million cheaper. If we wouldn't have been able to find any water here where it was all coming up from Burn, that was going to trigger the B phase, which was $5 million more. But feeding it into one plant, um, doesn't cut that cost in half. And keep in mind, you've got a burn water main that's failing. The only way you can fix that is to take that out of service. If that's your only source of water, that was the other thing we were posed with, is there was no easy way to fix that main. The only way you can do it is to keep that in service, build a redundant second main, and what was that distance, 11 miles? About 11 miles, which is a substantial cost. Um, to build that second redundant main, only then to come back and rehab the main. But the exact things you were saying was the, the basis of the study that was done three years ago. We were looking at all options to figure out the most cost-effective option for the city of Decatur, which ended up, uh, we were thankful that we were able to find the water that we found because it, it allowed us to, to choose the cheaper option that was selected in the, that was suggested in the report. So we were able to save that money. The secondary benefit then was the redundancy. I would say that wasn't our top priority. We were looking for the cheapest option to begin with. How could we provide a new treatment facility for the next generation at the lowest cost to the citizens of Decatur? It proved out that the two plant scenario was the cheaper option and then we benefited by the, the redundancy scenario. The, and the beauty of that redundancy, it now allows us to switch back and forth between plants, which now allows us to take the burn raw water main out of service once we have the new plant. Now we can rehab that and only fix what's bad in it, because we can shut it down and repair it and fix some of the things we need to do to fix it. So, that also figured into the cost effectiveness of the overall planning process.
Mark, as a water plant operator, the redundancy was a big issue. We've been without water, it's scary, you don't want to run the town out of water.
And Mark has been at like 60,000 every time you drill?
Yeah, every, every test well's 60,000 and that's, that's just the, the bare minimum test well. And if you drill it and there's nothing there, it's 60,000 down the drain and now you're going to do another 60,000 to try and find the next one. Other comments? Okay, seeing none, I would-
Do I have a comment?
Yes.
I was going to say, my initial reaction was your initial reaction. I went home and I immediately slammed on the table and I said, "We will never get ahead in this world because everything goes up." My wife said, "You're fine, calm down." So I looked at our bill, how much does it cost? I, like you, thought it was going to go up $67. So I looked and it's going to go up probably $19 in two years old. So I was still aggravated, but, so then we, we got through that. I saw presentations from everybody here. I'm coming in late on this, this has been going on for years. I only had one concern, what about the people who don't have the money? We all have the money to do this. So, it all comes down to money. So I went to the person who won't come to this meeting because she's 90 years old and is on a fixed income, talked to her for about an hour. Her concern was, what about the other people who don't have money? So we talked, she came up with ideas, you know, "I don't have a lot of money, but we, I will conserve water, you know, so I'll watch what I do, watch how I spend." That was my grandma. So then I went home, talked to my wife again, "So what do, what do you want your name attached to? Do you want somebody to be upset because their bill is now $20 more? Or do you want more people frantic because there was a catastrophic failure and you decided not to do this?" So that's how I've decided, how do I fix this problem? Do I have these people upset because their bills go up? Or do I have these people upset because I didn't have their bills go up, there's a catastrophic failure?
Well said.
So I can do nothing but support this decision because I don't want my family to be without water and it could very well happen anytime. And whenever it's freezing cold outside and we had no water and there was no water indicator, I luckily working for Wayne, so I brought water home to the people, but I, I don't want that to happen again. And for my short time here, this is the only thing I can put my name on, I'm supporting it.
Any other comments?
Just, we do all take it for granted that we turn on that spigot and we have water for about a buck a day. And one of our main duties for the city is to provide good, clean, usable water. So, we have to make the necessary steps.
I have a question.
Sure.
My name is John Janadash, um, I'm just looking at it from a long-term perspective, um, will the rates ever go back down after we pay off this project?
Theoretically, they could. Theoretically, they could. There'll be more infrastructure needs within 20 years.
You're talking 20, 30, years now, no?
It's a great question, I had the same question when it came across me, I'm like, we have to pay how much for how long? But these people do a report and it's basically laid out, it's not like we're getting, we're not putting extra money back, it's basically going to pay the debt that we have to borrow to do all this. And that was why, when they first approached me, that's what I originally thought, like, man, we're going to make these pay, people pay this forever, basically, but we're just paying back the debt and maybe in 40 years, we might be able to take it back down, but something else is probably going to break. We're kind of in this position because I'm new on council too, I think a lot of things got kicked down the road and maybe a plan should have been fixed 10 years ago, but it didn't. Now we're at this position where we're fixing two plants and we're hitting it really, really hard, but it's really the only feasible option left. So, it's like we're biting a bullet and-
The new plant is older than Tyler, Scott and me. It's old, that's the new one.
I just don't want to, we're trying to be proactive here, but it's going to hurt at first.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Water, oh, I need to see if you can ask. Um, so, you know, you said that things have gotten like kind of pushed out, so obviously this is a project that should have been completed multiple years ago, um, but you know, now we're doing it now. So now is there going to be something that, like, in origin, put in the plate to make sure that in 40 years we're not, or you know, years down the road, we're not getting an increase again, like, 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 like-
No, you know, it's really-
Like, are you going to keep doing something for that, years down the road, that you're going to have them again?
You know, with this, with this particular project, it's only addressing the actual water mains in what, four different streets. The water lines run right out here in front of City Hall, it's not addressing them. How old do you think they are, Jeremy?
18, 19.
There's always going to be water main breaks. And, you know, it's going to take forever to update all of our water lines. So there's never, it's not going to, our expenses are not going to go down.
The plant, the expected life, um, use is 30 years, 40 years?
No, more than 40, 50.
So the new plant that we're going to build should be worn out in 40 years. So at that point, they would build another one.
To answer your question, from me sitting here, as long as I sit in this position, I want to be proactive that someone doesn't get slapped in the face because I didn't do the proactive act.
Have they got their pipes for like 1,800, like, why are they still there?
That's every-
Because it costs a lot of money to replace them.
Cost exists.
And for Wayne, there's still pipes there made out of brick. Just expensive, yeah.
I mean, in, in the past, if there's a fault on the part of past councils and administrations is that they tried to hold the rates down and they didn't do the projects that probably needed done. And so, we're, we're trying to catch up with that.
And we, we've been trying to accomplish about 2,000 to 3,000 feet a year for the last three or four years that we either replace in-house or with a contractor. So we are tackling, the really matter is, and we love to tackle the matter is, on top of this big project with any operating, any additional operating projects that we can get. Kevin and I talked, Dave, and, you know, what can we do, what can we do, so on and so forth. We're trying to soften some of these increases, but we're to the point that, well, you know, five years ago, all the departments joined together to give us better workforce, to give us more workers, to be able to do a lot of this stuff in-house, we've been doing a lot of that. We also have worked with local contractors to get the jobs completed, that we cannot do in-house, you know, to try to keep the rates down. We're doing absolutely everything we can possibly do. You know, we've had a change, you know, people, uh, workers, public council, um, you know, we are making changes, we are looking at a better meta of everyone, but we need to be cautious. We did feel sorry about it, rate increases are not popular with anyone, but we're to the point that we have to, we have to know of this.
And it's not unique to Decatur. This is, I mean, every community's happened to go through the same thing. Because all these communities are roughly the same age, so I mean, it's, we're all going through the same thing.
We have a roughly 50 mile of water main insurance, okay, so it'll take some time to get that aging infrastructure taken care of.
I think I can speak for council and the department heads on this thing. We really appreciate you coming here tonight and voicing and expressing your opinions and sharing those with us. It showed, you had to have some courage to come out here and speak in front of us. Please trust us that we've gone through the process and the study on this thing, we're not here to just throw the money away. The, the department heads, as he has mentioned before, in the last five or 10 years have been very conscientious about, before we're going to pave a road, we're going to make sure that the infrastructure underneath the road is fixed. And they've done a darn good job of that and I, and I hope that we have your confidence as a city, that we're trying to improve it. I mean, you, you have to get tired of all the construction, the paving and all that stuff that's been going on throughout the whole time with the bridge out here at Belmont with Washington Street and all that kind of stuff, but the goal is to get this infrastructure fixed and then pave it. Like Master Drive, that was a big project, but it's fixed now. We don't have houses flooding, hopefully we don't have houses flooding anymore. That's the goal, guys, and thank you for being here.
Thanks, Greg. If there aren't any other comments, we've been in the public hearing for just a little over an hour. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. I would look for a motion now to reopen the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same, thank you. Um, I need to make a legal notice for the public hearing that we just had on the water rates and surcharges, a matter of record, Phyllis? That you posted that, advertised it accordingly?
Advertized it.
A motion to make that a matter of record?
Second.
Motion and a second to make that a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Uh, next, I need to make proof of notice that we mailed to outside users, those of, which I think was the vast majority of the residents here tonight, the water rate charges a matter of record, the letter that we sent out to them.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same, thank you. Next, we would have our third and final reading on ordinance 2018 dash two for our water rates and charges. And Phyllis, do you have a copy of that? This has been read and passed on its first and second reading and tonight would be doing our third reading and then following up with the passage and adoption of the ordinance. If I could have a motion to place ordinance 2018 dash two in its third reading by short title?
Okay, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018 dash two on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018 dash two in its third reading by short title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2018 dash two, short title, an ordinance establishing amended rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the waterworks system of the city of Decatur. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018 dash two on its third reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance number 2018 dash two on its third reading, I would have roll call vote on this.
Craig Kouschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. Ordinance 2018 dash two has been adopted, thank you. Uh, next would be consideration of the bond ordinance for this project and on that there, we, Tim has a ordinance prepared, we would do our first and second readings and passages on that this evening and then come back on the 20th? Yes, the 20th of February, uh, for the third and final reading and adoption of that. Tim, you have any comments to make before we get into this?
No, the, uh, the bond ordinance would basically authorize the issuance of bonds that would fund the two phases of the projects that were discussed at length at the public hearing. Uh, so, Phyllis, I need an ordinance number on this one, if I may.
Ordinance or?
Ordinance.
Or the resolution? Um, three.
Three.
Be the ordinance 2018 dash three.
Then I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018 dash three on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2018 dash three in its first reading by short title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018 dash three, an ordinance of the city of Decatur, Indiana authorizing the acquisition, construction and installation of extensions, additions and improvements to the waterworks of the city of Decatur, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of waterwork revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks and certain other matters connected therewith.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018 dash three on its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2018 dash three on its first reading, would have roll call vote, please.
Craig Kouschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018 dash three on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018 dash three in its second reading by short title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018 dash three, an ordinance of the city of Decatur, Indiana authorizing the acquisition, construction, installation of extensions, additions and improvements to the waterworks of the city of Decatur, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks and certain other matters connected therewith.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018 dash three on its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass for passage of ordinance 2018 dash three in its second reading, we could have roll call vote, please.
Craig Kouschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. I'll make a motion at a table, ordinance 2018 dash three for its third reading for our next council meeting, which is the 20th of February.
I'll second, I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2018 dash three until February 20th at our next council meeting for third reading and passage at that time, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Uh, next is consideration of resolutions- Uh, next is consideration of resolutions expressing intent to issue bonds.
Have a safe drive.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve and Mark and Frigo. Yeah. We'll talk to you. Thank you. Consideration of resolution expressing intent to issue bonds. Tim, you want to preface this?
Uh, again, this is the authorization to proceed with the intent to issue the bonds. Bond ordinance establishes the various projects that would then be funded by the bond, so, uh, this is something that you have to do in the bonding process. It's just steps that you take.
Yep.
So, Phyllis, I need the next resolution number, two?
I need a, I would be, look for a motion to introduce resolution 2018-2.
Yes, I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2018-2 by short title only.
Thank you. And I have a second. Tim? Do you vote? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tim.
Resolution number 2018-2, "Preliminary Bond Resolution of the County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana Authorizing the Issuance of Waterworks Revenue Bonds of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the Purpose of Preparing Funds for the Certain Waterworks Improvements and Related Matters."
I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2018-2.
Second. I have a motion to pass resolution 2018-2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Resolution 2018-2 has been passed. Thank you. Next, I have proof of filing ordinance 2017-17, which was for the Bank of Geneva Annexation, filed with the county auditor, clerk, commissioner, recorder, and Washington Township trustee. We need to make that a matter of record.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Moving along here, uh, we recently had a position available on the Decatur Housing Authority, and, um, Jack Macklin is chairman of that committee, and he sought out and found a gentleman, Reverend Randy Rossman, who's the pastor at the, what's his name?
United Church of Christ.
Zion United Church of Christ, uh, has willingly, uh, accepted that appointment, and, uh, he's come in and signed his appointment papers. So, I just need to make that a matter of record. He's gonna serve, uh, to the Decatur Housing Authority.
I'll make a motion to move.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to make this a matter of record for Randy Rossman to be-
How long is that?
How long is he in office?
Four-year term. It's from January of eighteen through December thirty-first to twenty-one.
Thank you.
That's Bob's pastor.
A motion?
Yeah.
I need a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Uh, Jeremy, the next thing up was the annual review of our ADA compliance plan. Did you pass these out to everyone or just? Okay, everyone has one of these? This is something we do every year. Jeremy has to, uh, keep up with what the state requests and, uh-
Four-year term.
-improve our, all of our corners with our ADA ramps. Jeremy?
Just, just a small portion of what we're required to do, um, to comply with ADA standards. Uh, what we're gonna go over tonight is just a quick review of where we are at. Um, like Ken said, back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, there was a big push for ADA removing barriers and such, um, improving, uh, pedestrian safety, uh, wheelchairs, so on and so forth. Um, we're required to improve eight, uh, an area of eighteen, uh, ramps per year. Um, you can see since two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen that we've made quite a improvement. Um, this year, we've improved eighteen ramps. There's been years that we've been a little short due to funding. There's been other years that, you know, we've been twenty, twenty-five ramps per year or so. Um, we're, we're averaging real well. Um, the City of Decatur did have one request or one complaint, um, which a correction was made with, um, further improvements to be scheduled in, in the spring of this year. Uh, anyone that has an ADA complaint or request to move a handicap barrier may contact myself on my email or at seven-two-four-three-three-five-six. Um, sorry, questions or concerns about this report?
Explain that red, yellow, and green.
That is our rating system. It's, it's set up just like a street light. If it's red, it's, there's nowhere close, um, to being, uh, in compliance. Yellow, it could be some adjustment. Green is good to go. Um, we will get into this a little bit further, um, as some of the council and board of works meetings kind of lighten up a little bit. I have a lengthy presentation with ADA and, and our phaser ratings and stuff that, that we need to go through a little bit later on this spring, but we needed to get this review, um, in and make it a matter of record that we did review this.
So, you're just looking for us to make this a matter of record that we had this review this evening, correct?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and two seconds to make Jeremy's ADA program review for two thousand seventeen a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Next is, uh, consideration of an ordinance capping our building permit fees. Um, this was discussed earlier today at the plan commission meeting, and then it was discussed again at our board of works meeting prior to this meeting. And, uh, Tim, I'll let you kind of preface it a little bit more from there.
Uh, back when our city code was codified in two thousand fifteen, Nate Roomslag, who was our city engineer at the time, uh, and some of the other department heads reviewed our rates that were charged for building permits and adjusted those rates and tried to bring them up, uh, to a more current level compared to other communities. Um, they work fine. They've been in place since two thousand fifteen. They work fine until you get to a really big project, and then they suddenly escalate, uh, which, uh, is not fair to developers or to projects of significant size. And we, at the time, up until late last year, we didn't have any projects that, that was a problem. But we have two ongoing right now. One is the school project and one is the hospital project out at Woodcrest. And when you do the calculations for the permits that need to be issued for those two projects, given the size of the project and the fact that the permits are based on, uh, cost of construction as opposed to square footage requirements, uh, the, the fees get rather high, and they get way out of alignment with what was intended. And that was to be consistent or somewhat uniform with those of communities and also to cover our expenses with regard to administrative expenses and, uh, inspection costs. So, uh, in looking at this, um, you know, we decided that Kurt and Sharon in the building department looked at this carefully and decided that it didn't make sense to charge the fees that our schedule would normally require. So, they're recommending that a cap of twenty-five thousand dollars be put on all fees for a particular project, um, and that helps bring the costs down significantly and, and makes it much more reasonable. Um, in order to do that, you have to do it in the form of an ordinance. So, it's an amendment to our code that establishes that, you know, for, uh, fees assessed for permits on a particular project that's been approved, uh, that should not exceed more than twenty-five thousand total. Um, and so, that's what this cap does. So, the plan commission reviewed that and approved it and recommended to council that you adopt that ordinance. The board of works did the same. So, uh, at this point, uh, Phyllis, the next number is four?
Be four.
Okay, so, okay. Yep. So, I'll-
Make a motion to place ordinance 2018-4 on its first reading by short title only. Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance number 2018-4 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a most, I'll make a motion to pass. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number 2018-4, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 150 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented for the purpose of establishing a maximum amount to be charged for necessary construction permit fees."
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion now to pass ordinance 2018-4 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018-4 in its first reading, and we would have roll call vote on that.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. Now, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018-4 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-4 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2018-4, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 150 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented for the purpose of establishing a maximum amount to be charged for necessary construction permit fees."
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-4 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2018-4 on a second reading. Phyllis, we have a roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, go ahead. Suspend rules, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2018-4 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-4 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Ordinance 2018-4, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 150 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented for the purpose of establishing a maximum amount to be charged for necessary construction permit fees."
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-4 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2018-4. Phyllis, we have a roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Stewart?
Yes. Ordinance 2018-4 has been adopted.
Any other good news for tonight, Ken?
Um, yeah.
We're getting there, though. We're almost there.
Um, Tim, do you want to talk about the corner of the property over here?
Yes. Okay. Um, as you know, we have a, uh, building that's not in a good state of repair over here on the corner of First and Row, uh, and, uh, the, uh, there were citations to remedy the situation issued and, uh-
Let's clarify, this is the northwest-
Northwest corner. Um, and, uh, Craig, uh, took it upon himself to try to work with the owner of the property to find a way to resolve this issue in a way that would, uh, take down the building. Um, and, in the long run, the individual, uh, has agreed to allow the city to take title to the property, uh, but the city would then be responsible for removing the building. Uh, and that would be limited to, uh, a maximum of twenty-five thousand, which is the most that the city could pay without getting two appraisals, because if it's over twenty-five, you have to go through the process of getting two appraisals, and then the maximum you can pay would be the average of the two appraisals. So, if it's twenty-five thousand or less, you don't have to go through that process. We don't actually think it will total twenty-five thousand, but we don't know that for sure. Um, in order for the city to move forward with that, uh, that's gonna require council to do two things. First is, you have to adopt a resolution expressing interest in the property, and then, secondly, council would need to, uh, agree that it would pay up to twenty-five thousand dollars of the cost related to, uh, the, uh, testing, the remediation, the demolition, and the disposal of the building. Um, we're not paying any dollars to the individual. Uh, the, the property would need to be deeded over to the city free and clear of weans and encumbrances. Uh, there is a mortgage on the property, and the owner's working to get them faint to release that mortgage so that that can be done. Uh, if the city approves the resolution expressing interest in the property, then we'll move forward with doing the phase one environmental assessment. Uh, Jeremy's been through the building. He doesn't think that there's a significant problem there, but we're not gonna know that for sure till we do the testing. Um, and that will then determine how much we end up spending on remediation, uh, and that tells us how much we would have to spend then on demolition and disposal. If the total cost of those expenses would exceed twenty-five thousand, uh, we would have an agreement with the owner of the property that that individual would be responsible for any overage. So, at this time, uh, if the council is interested in acquiring that property, I need to have you approve a resolution expressing interest in it, and then, secondarily, uh, I would ask for a motion that, uh, the council approves expenditure, city funds up to twenty-five thousand for those expenses.
Is there an actual address of that property?
Uh, the, I have a parcel number, and then the street address, as far as I can tell, is one oh eight West Monroe Street, Decatur, Indiana.
This would be resolution three, then? Is that correct?
I know, we're doing a lot of them.
That's correct? Yeah.
Three?
It's, um, the very easternmost part of-
Two thousand eighteen dash-
All those buildings-
Three.
East of the alley.
The resolution.
Of the alley, yeah.
Where's the guy?
I'm sorry?
Where's Hector John?
No, 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 no. That's at the house.
That's the other one.
Right over here.
On the north.
You got the movie theater?
Northwest corner.
Small town, orange room.
Yeah, the old car.
Yes. That corner.
Good, I swear about it, yeah.
Yeah, I bet you were.
I will make a motion, uh, to introduce resolution 2018-3 by short title only.
I have a motion and a second by Scott over here, uh, to place resolution 2018-3, uh, in its, uh, just to introduce it by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Tyler.
Is he gonna then be responsible for the exterior of the other building when this one comes down?
There's a, that's a very good question, okay? Uh, we don't know what we're going to get into when we tear that building down and the exterior wall of the other building is exposed. It's the same situation we had across the street when we tore down that building, and we ended up, you know, that, the wall that was exposed, Becky Cochran's building was not in a good state of repair, and we ended up having to put that brick facade outside of that, okay? We may incur that expense. We don't know. If we do, it's not gonna be near as big as that, because that's not near as big of an area. But, but, yes, there's a, there is a-
Risk.
A risk. We don't know until we get into it. That's a good question.
Would that be part of this? But that's gonna be something- But that's going to be something.
That's something down the road.
Yeah, that doesn't mean we have to put a brick facade on it. That would look the nicest, obviously, but.
But when we take this down, that, that our responsibility, that side of the wall?
Actually, the wall is his.
I asked for the opportunity to put some type of historical or whatever, welcome to Decatur, on that wall, and that's all.
And that would be in the agreement that we have the right to use that wall either for, you know, promotional events or for, yes.
Not his. Good question, Tyler. Thank you. So, we had a motion and a second to introduce resolution 2018-3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Tim?
Resolution 2018-3, short title, resolution of the county council of the city of Decatur expressing an interest in purchasing the real estate.
I'll make a motion now to pass resolution 2018-3.
Second. I have a motion and about three seconds. Oh, sorry. For passage of resolution 2018-3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Believe it or not, I'm done with the last thing.
Well, isn't there a second part?
Nope.
Not tonight?
No, this is.
Introduce it and pass it.
Oh, on the, on the expenditure of funds. That's what, yeah.
So, what, what does that need to be stated as?
I think you just have, you have something on, in your record showing that you authorized the expenditure of up to 25,000 for the.
Demolition.
Testing, remediation, demolition, and disposal of the building on this site.
Okay. I'll make, so moved. I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Thank you, Wiley. The last thing that I have to mention is the ordinance 2017-5, which is in relationship to the landlord being responsible for the tenant's utility bills, and we've been tabling that each council meeting until we're ready to strike it and introduce a new one, and I would just ask that we table that again this evening.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The same. And that's all I have. Let's go out to the department heads. Lenny?
Uh, the February 4th, we've gotten our order, and she includes officer's results from their public safety unit, and they're waiting on that. Get two and three high right away.
Thank you. That's awesome. Kevin?
I'm good.
Thanks for all your work on the water situation. New guy get, really got thrown into it, didn't he, Bob?
I don't know why. Let me name one.
What?
You're having a fun.
Don? Kurt?
Kurt.
Bill? You want to back up anything? Jeremy?
Madison Street Restrooms are coming right along. We'll tell that within a month, we'll have the restrooms. Already talking about all the facilities, we got time to share. City employees will do about, oh, 80 to 90 percent of it, so it's been keeping us busy.
Yep.
Little snow events that brought you back and some other things, so. Get some things about.
Jeremy, I took a drive around town today. Good job. Tell your guys good job on all the snow removal.
They were up and out of the tree.
Yep, they did a good job. Look at Don back there. And?
We had a meeting with American Truck Service and COT, for the fire rehab. We'll have information probably, the technical meeting.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Melissa?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Any comments from the public, considering that there's only six public left? No comments. Council members, any comments?
I think that it's worth noting that professionally, I wish her well, but Krista Miller leaving as a public leader, that's a, that's a big blow, because we had the market cornered in Fort Wayne with getting coverage down here. I don't know what's going to happen over there, because it's easy to get coverage whenever you've got people pulling for you on the inside, and she's gone now. So, that's, it might not seem like a big deal, but it's a big deal.
No, it is.
For the city of Decatur.
Now, we got to lean on you again, Scott.
Still work for you, but.
We got to lean on you.
I'm not getting anything out of that shop. So, it's, it's a big loss.
Yes, it is.
Whether you like her or not.
And we, we wish her the best, doggone it, you know?
Yep.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, permission from council, we had better sponsorship for our summer concert series than we had figured, and at this time, I would like to have permission to have ten shows. Which is moving from the first and third, we're going to have a couple of them on the.
In between.
Yeah, so we'll keep you posted on that, but we, we're still booking it.
Is this putting one earlier or one later?
Two earlier and middle.